So here we are again, early in the year and we're looking at our at our annual budget, which is the big topic today, but why don't we, I guess I'm calling us to order and Julian, as you can see who our members are today, we're have a full group and we do have a quorum. And if anybody, if everybody's had a chance, or if not, please do so now, just to kind of peruse our minutes from the January meeting, the January 7th meeting. They seem to be in order to me, but if anybody else has any questions, let's get right to that.
Looks good to me.
Could I have a motion to accept the minute, right, we have to vote on accepting the minutes for the meeting?
Yes, you do.
I make a motion to accept the minutes.
I'll second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed? Okay, so that passes. Great. So why don't we review Linda's report? If everybody has it and we can ask any questions as we go through, I can certainly see that the the confusion and somewhat disorganized COVID vaccine rollout applies to us as applies to everybody else in this country.
Yeah.
Hopefully, next month or so, we will, you know, maybe get a better handle on that.
Well, I, I think that Geraldine and I are seeing even improvements. You know, over this past week, so um you know, it's it was, it was disappointing to realize that there was so, such a little understanding of what it would be like to try to have people over the, well, some people over the age of 75 have to navigate a complicated computer process to schedule their appointments. But we, we've really been able to help a lot of people and and I do see improvements in the, the system. So, you know, all, all you can ask is, is that, you know, when problems are identified that they're dealt with, then we seem to be heading in that much better direction. The next age group to come in is, I believe, 65 to 74 and everyone who is considered at risk. So that's a lot of people. So hopefully it will go, go well.
Well, you know, I mean, I think you know, one of the issues that we're going to be dealing with, at least for a little while, is the flow of the vaccine. You know, states are seeing issues with that now. The good news is that people seem anxious to want to get it.
Yes.
As particularly in this age group. You know, I think, and that's important that they have confidence in it. And hopefully things will continue where people will remain confident in it. You know, but, but you really never know.
Well, we have, we have encountered some people who are just not sure.
Yeah.
And they would like to take a little bit longer view. You know, I think the fact that it was developed so quickly made people a little skeptical that it would be as, as effective as it seems to be. So we'll you know, have to respect people for where they are and their comfort level, so. But it does seem that everyone who is interested in getting the vaccine, we've been able to help get, get through the system and and either through their, their own patients or you know, we've been able to, we've had very good success with the Shelton site of Griffin Hospital. Where people can just call and make an appointment.
Oh, that's great.
That, that makes a huge, huge, huge difference. So it's, it's, you know, it's certainly not around the corner. But actually, you know, all the sites are pretty much, you know, not around the corner, so. And people, people who have gone there have reported to us they're being treated very, very well. They seem to be treated with great courtesy and understanding for seniors who have disabilities. They've been very, very very much able to adjust their system to meet the, the seniors' needs, which is great.
Do you think there'll be any opportunities for vaccinations to occur like they do with the flu? In other words, would we be able to host possibility of vaccinating at some point? Or is that kind of out of the question at the moment?
You know, I, I don't think we're, we're heading in that direction, Bill. We may at one point get there. At this point, I know my husband is over 75 and he was scheduled for an appointment on Monday at Post University and got an email apologizing for the fact that they did not receive the allotment they were promised. So they were having to cancel appointments, so you know, I, I just think that the accessibility of the vaccine will probably continue to limit you know, where it can be distributed, but certainly, you know, our, our good success with the flu clinics has been, you know, people feel comfortable and, you know, when this is done close to their homes, so.
It is all complicated by the fact that, you know, certainly one of the one of the dos- one of the choices requires such care and storage and the, you know, how cold it has to be.
Right.
You know, which is, you know, it's great that it was developed, but at the same time, it, it causes its own set of that's the cause of those issues.
Yeah.
So hopefully, you know, as time goes on, and that you have to have two of them, I mean, so the first time you do it, that just means you're going to have to get it again, or it doesn't.
Right.
Not necessarily going to be as effective as it should be.
That's right.
So, yeah, I think, I think it's going to be a bit of a climb for a while and that so again, hopefully the government now will get a tack together and, and solve some problems rather than, rather than ignore them. And maybe we'll, you know, in a few months, at least for our population, whoever, I would hope that, you know, a very, very high percentage of our population will be inoculated by you know, sometime in April perhaps.
Yeah. That would be a lovely thing.
But the, the flow of requests, I mean, you and Geraldine are able to manage that okay yourselves?
Yes, we've, we really, you know, every, everyone who's called has gotten a call back. Everyone who has experienced a problem. You know, there, there are very strict guidelines right now about who can receive the vaccine. And certainly some people are frustrated by the fact that they have to wait, but that's the way it's set up and that's the way it's being done and that's the system we're working with, so. I think most, well, I know everyone understands that. They may not be happy about it, but they understand.
And they're pretty good about allowing, you know, like I know in certain things, if you are assisting someone, whether it's, you know, taxes or healthcare or things like that, there's a couple of layers of identification and approval that assists, people who assist are required to present. Is it at least streamlined in that way? In other words, if you're helping somebody, all you gotta do is type their name and whatever other identifying information they want, and you can set up their appointment. There's no requirement that you have to legitimize yourself as being some sort of a medical person for, you know, a surrogate of any kind for the person you're dealing with, right?
Actually, we don't have the capability of scheduling for anyone. We can talk them through the process, we can refer them, as I said, the Griffin Hospital site has proven a wonderful, wonderful resource for us. And a lot of people, you know, they just need a little bit more guidance, you know? Kind of just back out and start all over again. Or to ask people to be, you know, give the system another day or two. But you know, as, as we have checked back, people seem to be scheduling their appointments and and hopefully, you know, no, no other appointments are being canceled. But, you know, I mean, the, the nice thing that, that we discovered last night when, when my husband's appointment was canceled was that it was much easier to go into the VAM's system and get a new appointment than it had been a few weeks ago to set up his initial appointment. So and I'd say we spent maybe a whole three minutes so doing it, so. So that it, what's very clear to me and very encouraging to me is that they, they seem to be listening. And, and while I guess you kind of wonder, you know, why people didn't think of that before, I, you really can't get bogged down in that. You have to go forward and, and realize that people are responding. You know, a system to link the, the VAM's system with United Ways 211, call centers is, I mean, you have a call center in place, you know, use it. Use it and, and help people, so. Yeah, as I say, things are, things are moving forward.
Those are the only questions I, clarification I had. Anybody else have comments?
Not I. Looks good.
Great. I believe we don't have to vote on this, right? We just accept it?
You just accept that, that's correct.
Okay. So any, anything to report from the friends?
Not, not much, I don't think, Linda, right? I mean, we, we talked about, you know, making a commitment to the town again this year, which I think is in Linda's report. I mean, other than that, there's not, not much. We're, we are down a member, a board member, so. But we did get a, a treasurer since Lorraine Taverde and Wayne are moving. Lorraine had resigned as treasurer. So Brooke Wheeler is going to be the treasurer.
Great. Great.
Yeah, I'm, I'm very, very, very happy that such an important position and I, I think Brooke is going to do an outstanding job and, and we're all thrilled, I think, to have her step up and I think she'll be a great contributing member of the board. So.
I agree.
And, and given everything else, the fact that the friends are able to, again, contribute as generously as they are contributing is, is really appreciated and obviously is very important to us.
It, it is, it is. The friends' outstanding, outstanding commitment to the senior center.
Yeah.
And the seniors in our town.
And, and you know, given the challenges that have surrounded us, I mean, I'm, I'm very impressed that, you know, you were able to come up with that when we missed out on so many of the things that we normally would do. You know.
Thankfully, thankfully Pam Rusko stepped up to the plate and did the point set of sale, which made a nice profit. You know, that worked out, that worked out very well. We were able to do that even with COVID.
Yes.
Yep, yep. Well, that's, that's just a great example of thinking outside of the box and, and really getting our, getting our representation out there to people, you know?
Yeah, and I think people, people are really very anxious to support the senior center. I mean, it's, it's wonderful to see.
Okay, and shall we get into our budget conversation?
Oh, sure.
So this has been, this is a really challenging budget. We usually have the guidance of, of, you know, the year-to-date reports that can really, you know, guide us along, so. The senior center has not been operating as it normally would for quite some time, things that I would order every three months in terms of supplies. I haven't ordered yet. So you know, on the, the one hand, we are saving a tremendous amount of money. But, you know, hopefully we're, or at least my recommendations are that we establish you know, good foundation for hopefully when the senior center reopens. And it's very, very hard to know when that will be. So it's very, very hard to, you know, try to project what our needs are, but I think, I think it's important for us to be prepared on July 1st, even if the, the senior center cannot open or has to be a modified kind of scaled back operations. I think we still need to be prepared and, and be hopeful and so you know, a lot of things you'll see, I'm suggesting that we just keep as is.
When you say keep as is, maintain the fiscal year 2021 budget appropriation of?
Yeah, except for a couple of areas where I, I've noted that I, I can see, you know, when it comes to, let's see, telephone, I see that we're going to be needing increased allocations for our printing expenses. I had a conversation with Kim, always very, very helpful, and our maintenance contracts, you know, because this is, you know, we're, we're, we're looking now at what we think will be our expenses come July. So we're kind of far away from that, but obviously this needs to be done, so. We're, I recommend we, we just leave maintenance contracts to Kim Barron's expertise. And and she seemed comfortable with that. So you know, the things that I was able to change, to check into, I did. I think that was pretty much the only areas that I, I think.
Where, where is the, where is the place where you would have your you know, computer-based support, because I mean, I don't know if that's under telephone or I can't, I don't, I don't necessarily see it jumping out at me, but my, the only thing I would say would, would be that maybe, maybe we should earmark some monies to be able to do some programming that we'd have to pay for.
Okay. Well, we, I, you know, I try, again.
Online, online programming.
Yeah, I, I, when, when looking at programs, again, you know, we've been closed for so long. Even, you know, thinking ahead, we had one person who was interested in chair yoga and we had one person interested in yoga on Zoom. And I'm not quite sure what that represents, whether people are just, you know, waiting for the center to reopen. The aerobics response has been great. The, the response to Zumba has been very, very loyal. People do not miss that class. They love it. And I, I'm not sure where we're going to go with that. You know, we've attracted a lot of new people to the center through our Zoom programs. And how that's going to translate, I really, I really don't know. I hope that they just can't wait to, to come inside once, once the doors are opened again. I know that a lot of people are not going to rush back if there's any doubt that it's just going to be a really super safe environment and I don't see the town moving in any way to to open the center where there's, when there's a doubt about people's safety. So it's, it's hard to know. I think may, you know, we might look at other programs that we certainly have. You know, I, you know, I tried to give you a framework of what I'm thinking of, but I also know that I have quite a bit of money that I haven't allocated to new, new projects, but we certainly will have money there to what was it, $3,000 to develop new programs and often new programs. So how much you know, how much I want to allocate this spring? You know, I think we're kind of in a good place. I, I, I have certainly money set aside to continue or plan for continuing the programs that we're, we're currently doing, the, the interest in it's such a relatively small expense, but the interesting in the senior learning network has certainly grown and grown and grown. And, you know, you make new friends and you tend to keep them, you know, we're very fortunate in that. Same thing with the popularity of the soups on to go. You know, a lot of people were very much appreciative and anxious to support the senior center and, oh, by the way, gee, this is really good. So I think we've made a lot of, a lot of new friends through the process. So you know, it's, it's hard to, it's hard to really predict what we're going to be able to do. But I, I think we're certainly prepared. The, the friend's gift is a restricted gift, so that, you know, I hope I made it clear. I, I'm expecting quite a, a lot of the $11,000 that they gifted last year will, will not be spent because I can't, I can't just spend it for the sake of spending it. I have to utilize it, I think, for really positive programming. So I, I think I've allowed for that and, and still see that we're going to have quite a bit left that can be carried over because it is restricted. So I, I, you know, I think we're, we're at a good place and I think we're going to head to an even better place.
Linda, excuse me, can, can that money, is that money going to be turned over to 2022?
Yes, the, the restricted gift
Yeah.
is restricted. That means it can't be used for anything else. It was given to the town for programs and activities at the senior center. So that, all of that money that is unused will go towards the next fiscal year, so that's when I came up with the $8,000 from the friends plus what I anticipate to be somewhere in the in the range of 5,000, and I'm being very generous with that in terms of planning. I've got an extra $1,000 planned for programs that, that $5,000 may well grow. Again, you don't want to necessarily spend a tremendous amount of money on something unless it's going to be well-received by the community, so. You know, we're, we're, we're still on totally new ground here, so. But I think being cautious is kind of in my nature, so. But not to say that we're not going to go back you know, as robustly as, as we possibly can. And, and we're in a very good financial, I think we're in a very good financial position to do that.
You know, I mean, what I, what I keep thinking is, last year at this time when we had this meeting, none of us knew what Zoom was.
Right.
And I think that over the course of the year, things that actually, many of which already existed, just people didn't tap into, were suddenly tapped into to use and, and frankly, helped a lot of people get through this period. I personally would be surprised if anything will happen for the senior center in terms of indoors between now and probably next winter. Because no matter, no matter how well the vaccinations go out and so forth, I do think there's going to be a lot of trepidation about you know, the flu season and about, you know, the various ways that the flu is changing itself. That, that may, the, the vaccine may be perfectly fine for that, it may not, you know, there's a lot, there's a lot that we're going to learn in the next eight to 10 months about this, probably similar to what we've learned in the last 10 to 12 months. So I wouldn't be surprised though if there's going to be some next, the next cool thing to do online that is a social platform, so to speak, that we'll be able to use, and I think, you know, with the monies that you got saved, it would be, it would be great to be able to dabble into the world of the ones that are paid as opposed to, you know, as opposed to just what's free, because people are going to start monetizing this. And people are going to come up with good, interesting things to do, I believe, because. Because they've been thinking about it. And you know, it's the, it's the mother of invention, really, when you have a need. So, so I do hope that we'll continue to do the good, good stuff we've been doing this year by finding, finding the things that are um, uh, you know, engaging and interesting and compelling for our audience to be able to do and hopefully, you know, not to be restricted if there's a cost uh, behind it. And whether that means, you know, we, we, we need to charge everybody an admission that we're, you know, however, however you manage that in this environment, of course, would be, would, would certainly be a little bit of uh, acrobatics. But I think that um, having that, ex, you know, having that money that's earmarked for programmatic use is great because I think it'll give you a lot more flexibility.
Yeah.
I mean, I think, I think if you're comfortable with leaving everything where it is.
Well, it, it isn't everything. Uh, there are some areas that I think I, I do recommend that we, um, I think we're a little short on telephone. Uh, we're budgeted to thirty-two hundred. And if the rates stay what they are, we're currently spending thirty-two, thirty-five. So I think we have to allow for rates to go slightly above.
Talking about, are you talking about telephone?
Telephone, senior center telephone, yeah. So I, I was recommending that it, we increase that line to four thousand.
Is there a particular reason that the phones are going up? Or is it just that the phone companies like the electric company is just?
Every uh, you know, it's a dollar here, it's a dollar there, but things, things in my little world go up. They don't seem to go down. So uh, unless I make them go down by, you know, changing whatever coverage we have. But um, I, I think just to allow for rate increases, um, you know, we're already over budget and we will be over budget. So if there's any kind of rate increase, I don't think we're gonna be, we're gonna be able to cover.
I think that's a good idea, Linda, for all your utilities.
Yeah. I agree. And, and you know, even though you probably are gonna be, you know, pretty under in, in heating fuel, just because the, the price of the fuel is kind of gone down.
Right.
Um, but you aren't through the worst part of the year yet. Uh, but it wouldn't surprise me if you don't reach seventy-five hundred. That doesn't mean next, it doesn't mean, I, I think, you know, oil prices could be up a dollar a gallon.
It could.
And so I, I think, I'm with Tori, you know, I, if you need to, you wanna put more in for heating fuel and electric and telephone, then, you know, I think, I think you should do it because it's worse to ask. It's fine, listen, it's, if we're gonna wind up returning thirty thousand dollars to the town to go into the general fund, the rainy day fund, this year. Uh, I'd wanna make sure you're not underestimating next year. Um, because again, if we don't underestimate it, it's not like we're gonna go spend it. Uh, you know, the town will be able to utilize it. And frankly, I think sometimes they like to have a big rainy day fund. Uh, and so I think that, that you should not, you know, you should not a, a, anticipate, although we all, we all agree that it probably will be this, you know, what we went through this year will probably be very similar to what we get through next year. We should not anticipate that we're not getting out of this thing sooner. Because if we do, you're gonna have not enough money to be able to take a very important year, which is gonna be, whatever year we come back, it's gonna be a really important year for the, for this community to be able to function and show that it's, it's still a viable, valuable thing in town.
Oh, with the center being closed like all of this year and since last March, we'd be saving on electric and heat for this year.
Right.
Right, but it doesn't carry over. I mean, this is the way the bookkeeping works, right?
Yeah, nothing, nothing other, other than the Friends gift gets carried over, Sharon. So anything that is left in, in the allocations, the monies that were budgeted for the operations of the senior center, none of that gets carried over. The only thing that gets carried over is the Friends gift. Because that, that is, that, those, those are restricted funds. So everything else, you know, goes back, as, as Bill says, back into the pot of the general fund. Um, town uses that money very wisely, um, but um,
I didn't mean necessarily carrying it over, I just mean they'll be spending less on utilities.
Yeah, yeah, that, that's why it really does become a challenge to, you know, how often do I not have the lights on in the senior center? Well, every day, unless Geraldine comes in and says, Linda, it's too dark and didn't she get here? Um, you know, we're in our offices, I, I don't keep the lights on, you know? Um, uh, you know. Right, you know, I mean, um, there were a lot of, there were a lot of, lot of days when we, you know, we were asked to work from home. And so we weren't utilizing electricity or, or heat or telephone or anything at, at senior center. We were, you know, Geraldine and I were working from our homes. So um, uh, you know, that's why it's, it's hard to make these assessments because um, usually we have a year-to-date to kind of follow and look at and learn from in terms of, you know, we spent X number of dollars last year on these items. So it should be X dollars plus whatever percentage you wanna anticipate that. You're gonna add to that. So uh, but we don't, you know, I mean, when you see the, the actuals, um, you know, it's just, doesn't reflect a real, it just doesn't give you a real sense of, of where we'll be in a year from now, if the senior center is open.
Right.
So um.
And you know, we have to be, you know, understanding too that, you know, five or six months, if suddenly things start going well and suddenly eighty percent of the people in the country are vaccinated, it's gonna be a very different outlook that we'll have come September than if it's something else, you know, that if it's closer to what we're doing right now. We should certainly be prepared to provide the services that we would normally provide if we get lucky.
Right.
The worst thing in the world would be, well, one of the worst things would be, I don't know about the worst thing in the world, but a bad thing would be to cut our budget in anticipation of another year like this.
Yeah.
And, and then as luck would have it, to suddenly be able to be freer to do things and we can't, can't do anything.
Right.
Right, exactly, that, you know, we cut ourselves so thin that um, you know, because that's one thing, it's one thing the town's not gonna like. They um, they don't wanna, you know, there is no way Barbara's gonna go back to the taxpayers and say, oh, by the way, we, we kind of missed the boat on this one. Um, you know, there, you know, this is all, you know, this is all part of the town's budget request, they, you know, they, they want us to give them our recommendations. Um, and certainly they will look at those recommendations and they will take them very seriously. Um, but they will also, uh, you know, uh, the selectmen, the board of finance, all, you know, this is, this is going from us to them. And um, these are only recommendations. So um, if uh, if uh, Barbara or Kim or someone feels as though we're way out of whack, you know, they're, they're gonna, they're gonna make, they're gonna correct for the errors. So I mean, if you'd like, I mean, we're currently at um, seventy-five hundred for fuel oil. Do you wanna increase that? Or do you wanna leave that where it is? What would you like to do?
I say we put it up to an even eight thousand.
I agree.
You know, to have a little, small buffer in case the price goes up. And again, you know, I looked at the last couple of, the, the last two years of budgets, we've asked for certain amounts and always returned it an amount. Uh, seldom do we, do we go over in different areas. You know, we don't, we don't spend everything that we get, but we have everything we need. And I, and I think that's what our role is to do, is to provide us with what we need as best we can anticipate. If the town tells us we can't have it, that's a, that's, that's, we're not gonna go to war with them about that. We just have to say no to other things. But, but I think we should be prepared. So I, I think we should, you know, treat this like next year's gonna be a normal year.
And then, so would you like to see, we're currently at eight thousand for electricity? Um, would you like to see that go up as well?
Yep.
Yep, again, I think, I think even if it's just five hundred in there, you know, we're, we're gonna anticipate a rise in, in cost. And frankly, you know, what you say this year is great, but if it only has to go up a little bit and all of a sudden, we'd be in some trouble if we're able to have the lights burning all the time. Um, um, and again, we'll use this as a basis for next year's budget, which I hope will be back to a normal budget. So we might as well maintain where we are or increase slightly where those, you know, where those places are that we normally have to increase.
Yeah, very good. And um, so um, so do you agree then for the telephone? Um, uh, we are budgeted right now with thirty-two hundred. We know we're going over. I, I thought four thousand dollars would be a good number, but what, what would you recommend?
I like four.
If you feel four is what you need, what you think you're going, anticipate you're going to need, then let's go to, you're much closer to this stuff than we are. So I'm, I'm, I don't necessarily think I should, I would wanna be second guessing too much.
Yeah.
And, and again, if we go over, Lyndon, you don't use the four thousand dollars for the telephone, then whatever's left just goes back to the town anyway.
That's right, that's right, Virginia. And the way this also goes is you've, you, we've all heard that, that phrase, the bottom line. So, you know, if we're a little over um, prepared for fuel and a little under-prepared for electricity increases, that balance, you know, it balances out. And then the, the, the bottom line, the, the, all those lines together. Um, you know, there's kind of uh, gives you a little bit of flexibility.
Okay.
Um, so maintenance and um, senior center maintenance and repairs. Um, we are budgeted at forty-five hundred. That's one of those many areas that we seem to historically be over-prepared for. But I also think that that's a good thing.
Well, if you look at it just last year, just last year, we were over by almost two thousand dollars.
Yeah.
Whereas the year before, we were under by four thousand dollars.
Right, right.
So, you know, I, I guess my, my thinking is somewhere around forty-five is probably gonna be okay. It's just what's the surprise that happens and do we wanna factor in a big surprise or no surprise?
Right. And I think forty-five is good. Let's do that. Let's keep it there.
Do you wanna leave it at forty-five?
Unless you feel uncomfortable about it.
No, I, I think that's, I think that's a very good workable number. I think that big jump was the boiler that needed to be replaced and um, you know, I don't see that happening again, hopefully, real soon.
It could be, it could be something else, you know, but at the end of the day on this, you know, even though we were two thousand over in that particular area, we were still nine thousand dollars under in the overall bottom line.
Right, right.
So, so, you know, I think there's a little bit baked in already that, that we've probably got. I mean, I'm assuming the maintenance contracts are, are probably pretty much defined by others.
Well, they, they, right, it, they are what they are, you know? Um, I think one of the challenges that um, Good Hill, what Good Hill charges us, um, i- i- it's not like having a, a contract on your, on your furnace at home. You know, if there's, if something goes, like the boiler going, um, they bill us for it.
Yeah.
So they maintain it. They seem to do a pretty good job of maintaining it. But, you know, if it, if it goes, it goes. Um, but all of that, so, so we jumped. So maybe we should go back to cleaning services and, and supplies. I think we're good at five thousand dollars. Um, but I'm certainly open on that as I am on everything.
No, I think, I think that's fine. I don't think there's, we took a big jump, we took a big jump last year after a couple of years of being steady and being over. You know, I, I think we're probably, you know, we're probably okay there.
Okay, good. Very good.
Again, unless, unless there's something, you know, you, I mean, it's really what, what does it normally cost per week to do it? And, you know, multiply it by fifty-two.
Yeah, I mean, I was, I, I, I was able to confirm with um, the person who's doing our cleaning that he's gonna, he's gonna keep his, his fee. Right now, he's charging us less than half because quite honestly, Geraldine and I aren't that messy. So um, the, the work that he's doing um, is far less than he normally would do. But we still seem to look well and look good, looking good at the senior center. Um, so we'll, we'll let the maintenance contracts then be determined by Kim. Are you all comfortable with that?
Yep.
Yep. Yes.
I think um, I think we're safe on the postage. Um, and at that amount, it's still a shared newsletter. Um, and I think we're still more than, we're more than covered for any, any possible increase um, in, in that rate. Do you all feel comfortable with that?
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay. And office supplies, um, uh, again, that would seem to be uh, you know, an appropriate amount. Certainly not doing as much printing or, you know, anything right now. Um, except when I seem to cut down a few trees to do all the, print all this paper. But um, but that's fine. Uh, uh, well-used. So shall we leave office supplies at seven hundred?
I think so.
The, uh, there, there was quite a jump in printing. Um, we had, we're, we're going from, see. Oh. They're going up to three eighty-five per newsletter. We share that expense with recreation. So um, it's a five hundred and seventy dollar ink. So um it's a five hundred and seventy dollar increase for the year. Though I think, you know, it's such a necessary part of of uh communication uh with, with the seniors in town. And I, I think we should go ahead and just agree to that price. So that would go, that would be a jump. So it would go up to twenty-three ten from seventeen forty.
Okay, yeah.
Good. I mean, you need to, we have no control over that. You need to have that done. We need the newsletter, so.
Right.
Yeah.
Now, going then to outside services. And again, this is one of those things where if we all had our crystal balls and can figure, could figure out how many times in the next, you know, next winter, we'll be shovel, asking for snow to be shoveled. But it's the cable and internet. It's also trash pickup, which by, we're not doing. We canceled our trash pickup. Our cleaning person, uh, again, Gerald, it's ju, basically Geraldine and I. And so uh our, our small little bag of trash just gets combined with town halls. It's, it's not like we have to, you know, we're not, we're not paying for that expense right now. But um if, once we reopen, we have to allow for that.
Exactly.
So I, I think uh forty-two was the recommendation from Kim for last year. I think it's still a solid number. I think it's a good number. But I'm open to whatever you guys think.
That's fine.
Yeah, I think that's, certainly, I don't think it's a big chance to try to make that work.
Okay. And then um DP support, again, that's, um, that's the money that we set aside to keep a place in the budget. Virginia, you're new to this, so it's much, it's much easier to hold a place in the budget than to add a new line to the budget. So that's basically um putting that in there just to hold that spot in the budget. Should we ever, you know, should there ever be a different kind of need for technical support at, at, at the center?
Wait a minute, is there, is this a misprint?
What?
The original appropriation of twenty-five hundred? Or is it twenty-five dollars?
Twenty-five dollars.
Okay, cuz the original appropriation under FY twenty-twenty-one has it at twenty-five hundred, right? Am I missing that? Am I, am I looking at the wrong paper or something?
Oh, wait a minute. Let's see. Oh my, yes. Look at that. Well, I will have to. Okay. Something I did not notice.
Okay, but twenty-five bucks is great, and if you want to get twenty-five hundred, good luck.
I don't think we got twenty-five hundred last year. I think, I think.
No, I think that.
That is a very rare mistake.
As a placeholder, that's a.
Not, not, and certainly not with me. It's, it's Kim does an excellent job on all of this. So um, okay, but I will bring that to her attention.
Yeah, tell them, tell them we want to help them out.
And then again, fifty for the mileage. Programming um is, is uh, it's going out on its own. It's, it's, it's um last year. Last year, there were, last year. Okay, last year we were oh, here it is. Twenty-seven, four hundred and fifty, of which we've used, well, we've used a little bit more than that. So um so my recommendations based on the income or really its revenue that we are anticipating the gift from the friends, the amount of money that will be left, that will be carried over. I expect that to be uh twenty-nine, four fifty. And it's basically the difference between the eleven thousand dollar gift and the thirteen thousand dollar gift. So um so I don't know if you want this clarified more. I, I, I appreciate the flexibility to develop things as opportunities come along. I, I do monitor these costs pretty carefully. So um, you know, there is certainly going to be money in that budget to um, to develop new programs.
So are we going with a number of twenty-seven, four fifty?
No, that was our last number. So we're going, I'm recommending that we go with twenty-nine, four fifty.
Of, of which twenty-four is taken care of from uh what you have between the, what was it? Um, the eight thousand and what you would anticipate for fees plus the five thousand dollar carryover?
Right, exactly.
Where that comes from?
Yep, that's where it comes from.
Okay. Great.
And then miscellaneous, I um, I think uh you know, we asked for money last year for miscellaneous expenses. The American Express fee went up to seventy-five dollars annual fee. I don't use it very often, but um when I do, it's nice to be able to have that.
Yeah.
So um uh I, I am asking, I'm, I'm suggesting that we raise that to two hundred dollars because that American Express free fee used to be paid out of um outside uh services. And it no longer is. So uh what?
Yeah, then do it.
You need a little cushion there, Linda.
Yeah, just a little cushion.
Yeah, that's great.
Okay.
Yep. Okay, Linda, under where we had budgeted forty-two hundred dollars for, under maintenance, it's your last graph.
Right.
You need to, there's just a typo in trash pickup.
Where am I? Trash pickup. And you have that up. You see that where, Tori? Um, maintenance?
Under outside services.
Okay.
Go down to, we're currently budgeted forty-two hundred dollars.
Right.
And then one, two, three lines down. I'm looking at the one that you sent me, and you've got trash, T R A C H.
Oh my goodness. Oh, thank you, Tori. You know, there was a time I could, I used to be able to see. Well, thank you. Thank you very much.
Nicely done, Linda.
Well, thank you.
Yes, thanks.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm just gonna, you know, put my, my crystal ball to rest now.
Linda?
Yes?
Yeah, I have a question. When I was looking through it, you had anticipated six hundred dollars for um trips.
Right.
Yeah, um, now that would be for twenty-twenty-two.
Right.
Most likely, things open up.
Right, right. If, if we can do it, I mean, it's all, it's all gonna be flexible.
Right, right. But if things do open up, then we will, we will maybe be anticipating having some trips in twenty-twenty-two?
Oh my goodness, yes, as soon as we can. I mean, right now, the bus is restricted for medical use only, uh, no shopping, no um you know, no, nothing. Nothing fun, medical trips. We are using the bus for transporting some seniors' needed rides to get their, their COVID nineteen vaccinations.
I passed about sixty-seven the other day. I said, oh, they're probably coming from Southbury getting their shots.
Yeah, yeah.
Is that, is that the amount, about the amount that was appropriated last year or? Is that about what you should do?
That's about um but, but certainly, you know, I'm, I'm certainly open and flexible to, you know, that, that additional money that, that we have in there to be allocated. You know, there's, there's no doubt that if we wanted to do say a, a charter bus trip somewhere, like we did to West Point.
Right, right.
You know, we, we could consider using that for that.
Well, okay, yeah, that's what I was just wondering because I know everybody would really be happy to be able to do those little trips again.
Yes.
Once everything clears up, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, just to be able to um feel safe to be out and about. I mean, I know some people are braver than others. Those people that have decided, it's fine being home.
Well, you know, I do, I do think what we need to do, and I think we, we, I think we reiterated it a number of times as we were going through the budget. We want to be able to, when things, and they will at some point, get back to something like normal that we're able to, that we're able to get back to doing the things that we would normally do. And so, uh, you know, I think, I think that, that's sort of how we've informed ourselves to, to do this budget. And hopefully, we'll have a chance to do it. And if it's only six months worth, you'll have plenty of money, I think, to
Yes.
Very robust, you know, nine months worth of stuff if you wanted to do it, if you could
Right.
manage that. But I do think the main thing is, is that you're free to, you're free to be ready to respond if things get good. And if things don't get so good, well, you've got what you need based on what we've learned already.
Exactly. We don't want to be just kind of sitting around saying, hey, wait a minute, we didn't think we'd open this soon. I mean, that, that's gonna be a real, real happy time, you know, and we can.
And you'll be swamped at that time.
And that'll be great.
You know, we're anticipating uh soups on to start again in April?
You know, I'm gonna have to talk to um
You know, even the drive-through one.
Mary Ann and, and the cooks. You know, the, the talk of the variant is uh still rather new. But the recommendations are pretty serious in terms of wearing two masks. We suspended soups on but also the fact that um you know, depending on what the, the numbers look like in terms of people feeling, feeling safe. You don't want to ask people to go and, and go shopping and uh you know, spend more times out of the, they spend more time out of their homes and, and preparing food i- if they're putting themselves at risk. So I think everybody understands that. So um whether, I think the next few weeks will tell us a lot. And uh I haven't yet spoken to Mary Ann or any of the cooks to see what their thoughts are. But um uh, well, Virginia, you're here. You're one of our best cooks.
I think we have, I think we have a little bit of time because we have, excuse me, all of February and March, because we wouldn't be starting up until at least the first week in April.
Right.
So we have, you know, a little bit of cushion to see which way it's going. You know, and how things are going with the vaccines and the variants and, you know, all of that. And then we could, we could make a decision even if we get, you know, to March first and whatever, we can all meet and decide what we think is best going for April first. Hopefully, my hope is that April first, we're able to do it.
Yeah.
But um, you know, I think we just have to wait and see. We do have that cushion of time to evaluate where we, where we want to go. Because I know people really enjoy it. And it's a, you know, it's a great thing for people to do. They look forward to it. And we like doing it. But, you know, again, we have to be comfortable. I mean, I'm not going into the grocery stores. I'm doing curbside pickup and whatever. And if I had to cook for, you know, eighty people again, Sharon, on the, on the drive-through, we were getting eighty people at a time, you know, most Tuesdays, somewhere between seventy and eighty. That's a lot of shopping. You know, that's a lot of shopping to do. That's a long time in the store. Well, I know. I was just wondering if that was still kind of like the, the tentative plan, April?
Well, I think it's, it's um.
I mean, as, for me, as a cook, that was always my plan.
Yeah. Yeah, but it, but, you know, I, uh, you know, the, for some, oh, hello?
No, you're here. We see ya.
Hi, what did I do?
I don't know. You're here.
Heavens. Oh, I'm, I apologize. I apologize. I'm gonna sit on my hands. I touched something I shouldn't have touched. So um uh yeah, I mean, I appreciate everyone's flexibility and I appreciate every, you know, we're all, we're all concerned about everyone's safety, you know? And um, and that's our primary focus. And I think our, our audience certainly appreciates that. And our, our supporters certainly appreciate that. So um uh I, I think we'll just have to see, as, as Virginia says, what the next few weeks bring. And um how the vaccine, you know, how the supply increases, how many more people can be vaccinated. This, these are things that unfortunately are still kind of, as far as, you know, I know, there's still a lot of uncertainty about all of that. So, and the question of the variants and how, how very much more contagious um the diseases with these variants involved. And um, you know, it's, you know, you, you kind of think as though you're, you're understanding, you know, what needs to happen. And then you get thrown this curve of, you know.
This entire, this entire time has been all about what you decide now is probably not gonna be valid in two weeks.
Pretty much.
No, the whole, the whole thing constantly is changing. Whether it's, whether it's the belief in how you can best avoid it, whether it's um, um, you know, best practices, an- anything.
Yeah.
And so I think what we have to do is that maybe in our next meeting, talk about it. But I still think you probably won't be able to make a decision until, you know, the middle of March, as to whether or not you want to try to do something in the beginning of April.
Right.
Yeah, well, that's why I said, it's all tentative.
Yeah, but, but I think we just have to plan that it's going to remain tentative. And really, no great, no, no decisions should probably be made with, outside of a two-week period before you actually want to do something.
Right. I mean, the, the only, the only thing that really um presents an issue is, is that they, I, you know, critical piece of that. presents an issue is, is that the, I, you know, critical piece of that is getting the word out in the newsletter and getting the menus out in the newsletter. So, um, and that we would need to have a, pretty much a two-week, uh, lead on, you know? So, uh, we, we will, we will certainly be talking about that and, and, um,
Just to talk.
Yeah, and, and maybe not, maybe not April, maybe May.
Yeah.
I have a fun question. You have also. When the senior center does open full-time, um, if there was, um, a celebratory event, would that money come from the Friends to do something special? I'm just thinking kind of grand opening style.
Yeah, well, that's a, that's a lovely idea and, and well, we'll have to all think about that. Um, again, it's, it's, it's going to depend on what our opening looks like. I mean, the last time there was talk of opening, oh, Roxbury never did open. And the, the senior centers that did open, boy, it was a very restricted.
Yeah. No, I'm thinking more of when, you know, it's safe to be open and, and classes are resuming and that kind of thing. That if we were, if we were to have a celebration about that, would that funding be from the Friends?
Well, it certainly could be, but I, I would think that, that, um, you know, that's a good conversation to have with, with the Friends. Um, uh, hardworking, very, very generous. Uh, and again, I, I, I celebrate, uh, Tori and Virginia, who are both part of that very hardworking and generous board. So, yeah, I think they're, um, whether it's, it's at the invitation of the Friends, um, there was a wonderful event held by the Friends when the senior center could not do anything. You know, the Friends had that wonderful ice cream social. Um, so, you know, that's all.
I'm just thinking, I mean, I know that's not going to happen in the next six months, but, uh, more than likely. But when it does open and it will reopen, you know, is, I think it deserves a celebration and whether that funding can be money from the town as well, because we are part of the town.
Sure.
You know, supplemented by the Friends or something. What do you think, Virginia?
Yeah, I think there, I think there is money, we had talked about this at the meeting, at the Friends meeting, that we do have a little bit of cushion of money that, um, if we needed it, that we could put more in. So obviously, I would think just from my own point of view, that it $500 to do it or whatever, that I think the Friends could cover that.
And would probably be very happy to do so.
Sorry. Go ahead, Linda.
No, I, I, I just said, I think the Friends would be very happy to, to do something like that.
Uh, my, my only question would be, would we want it to be something that was subsidized by the Friends or just outright paid for by the Friends?
Well, that's, that was my question, basically. You know, that, you know, if it is a, an event, because we are representing the town, if the town would, you know, be able to put some money into that. As a, I mean, it could be, uh, our, um, open house idea that we have had. And maybe, maybe it's a, depending on the time of year, if it's, could almost be a bizarre kind of thing where things are there for sale and, you know, that kind of thing. I don't know. I mean, I, it, the idea just hit me, so I just was wondering how that could be funded.
Also, depending on where we are in terms of our budget at the time, you know, I don't know, if we go to the town and say, listen, there's two ways we can do this. Could you folks give us some money or would you let us move something within our budget lines if we're doing well somewhere?
Yeah.
You know, rather than being so rigid as they sometimes are about that. Because I'm sure Barbara would, whoever, whoever might be the selectman would have, as usual, preferred not to spend the money, but if there's already money in there that we could spend, they'd have much less objection to that.
Well, we've got, we've got a, we've built in a huge cushion here, so.
Right.
Why we wouldn't use it? I mean, it's there to be used, so, um, let's plan to have one heck of a party when we're.
Yeah, I think Kentucky Derby '22.
Elephant Rush.
So do we need a motion to, uh, do anything with these numbers, Julie?
No, not at all. Your, uh, no, next motion would be to adjourn.
Oh, we don't have to approve our recommendations or anything?
No, no, you don't.
Oh, wow.
Okay.
Well, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Can I get a second on that?
I second it.
Uh, all in favor of, uh, adjourning this meeting? Aye?
Aye.
Thank you all.
opposed, you may carry on.
You know, I think we, we learned something important, I think, I think splitting the, um, capital expenditures and doing the budget on two separate nights, boy, what a difference that made.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, maybe we'll learn from that for next year.
It's only 8:30 in that quarter after 9:00.
Right, right, no, that second conversation does take a good half an hour at least.
Yeah. For sure.
Yeah. Well, Virginia, we, um, we hope you have, we haven't discouraged you, but.
No, not at all, no, it was very straightforward. It was very straightforward.
Good, wonderful. Wonderful, well, thank you all. I, it's gonna be cold tomorrow, I hope you all stay warm, stay safe, take care.
Yeah, it's too bad we can't use the building as the heating place like we often have done.
Oh, I know, I know, but, um, Jarlin was checking in with everyone she worries about and, um, uh, you know, so we're, we're very fortunate, we've got a, a good team going.
Great.
Oh, good for you.
I'm hoping that, I'm hoping to get this without any power outage.
Yeah.
Well, there's not gonna be snow, so that'll.
Fingers crossed.
Snow, snow the beginning of next week.
We're not worried about that yet. Take care, everyone.
Yeah, everybody.
Thank you all.
Good work.
Bye-bye.
Everyone.
Thank you. Thank you, Julie.
You're welcome. Good night.
Bye, bye, Linda.